At 6:30, we'll have a call to order. We have no minutes to approve. At 6:31, we have a request for an application for endorsement of a plan, believe not to require subdivision approval, and that's from 106 and 114 Arnold Road. At 6:35, we have a waiver of site plan approval request for 367 Main Street, Gito's Brick Oven and Pizza and Ice Cream. And at 6:40, we have a waiver of site plan for 413 Main Street Catering and Tasting Company. We have the A and R. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes. So you have an A and R that just came in this afternoon, and this is something that was caught when the home was being sold. Actually, the closing is coming up, and they realized that the garage on the lot behind the home is actually encroaching onto the house lot of 114.
The notice?
Did you find? Do you have it?
No, I'm having trouble finding it. Okay. I'll start.
You got it? Okay. I'll start over. So this is property located at 106 and 114 Arnold Road, and actually, 114 is being sold. And it was discovered that the garage that is on 106 actually encroaches on 114. So luckily, it was caught before the property was sold, and they were able to do a lotline adjustment. So it doesn't affect the frontage, and you'll notice that the rear lot is marked that it's not a building lot. They actually have a right-of-way to access that rear lot in the barn. That's actually a big barn that's back there. And so since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend that you endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay. So with the new line, how far away is the garage? Is that ...
It's right ... It's three feet away from the property line.
That's all right to do that?
It's non-conforming already, so it's a take on the other people's property, so ...
All right. Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's all right. Any questions on it? No? Could we have a motion then to endorse the A and R?
移到
Wally? Second, Dean? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose nobody. Okay. Great. Very good. It's not quite 6:35, so if you want to start with your town planner update?
Don't really have too much for you, but I can tell you that the Draperwood subdivision is finally nearing final completion. So I went up to the subdivision on Monday with the DPW director, and we created a punch list of the items that have to be corrected. The DPW director did have them repave one entire road up there because the pavement quality wasn't good, so that's been done. There were a few issues that we noticed that when they installed the sidewalks, whoever the company was, somebody had their mailbox with a lot of plantings, so instead of having them move it, they went around it. So you have a sidewalk about this big, which doesn't meet ADA, so that has to be taken care of. There's a pile of debris that needs to be removed. Some stop signs and stop lines have to be painted. But all in all, it's in pretty good shape. They're building the last house up there right now, so they're working on the street acceptance plans, and I would expect that will be on the June town meeting.
Very good.
It's been a long time coming. That was underway when I came here, and I came here in 2005, so it's been a long time. So that's good news. And then December 14th, we'll have the continuation of the public hearing for 21 New Boston Road. The name of the restaurant has been released. It will be The Fix. That's from Niche Hospitality, Michael Covino. We do have the architectural plans, which I emailed to all of you today. Once I receive the responses from Mr. Dougherty on the other questions that John Chevlin raised, I'll get those out to you as well, and I'll have hard copies in your packets for the 14th.
Great.
And then that will be the only meeting in December because the others fall in between the holidays, and I don't know about you, but I don't really want to do it. So just kidding. If you want to meet, we can. But so our January meetings will be the 11th and the 25th.
Great. Okay. Very good. So we have the waiver of site plan for 367 Main Street. Jean, do you want to introduce that after you have your drink of water?
I do. So with us this evening, we have Teddy and Jenna Jedopolis. They are the owners of Gito's, which is the former Friendly's at 367 Main Street. And then we have Joe Cohen, and he is their representative this evening. You'll remember Joe from a few other projects. He's a landscape architect, and he's been doing more and more plans lately in town. So this proposal is to renovate the existing Friendly's building and convert it into a new restaurant that will retain the ice cream services while the outdoor ice cream window will remain, and they will be installing an outdoor patio as well. They're really updating the building with some nice features, and the project has been to design review committee and was approved. The design review committee did ask that the sign be moved, and that's reflected on the new renderings that you have here this evening. So we did send the project out for staff review, and no major concerns were noted. The fire department did want additional information, and Joe spoke to them this morning. Okay. So he can fill you in on that. And the building inspector asked that one of the elevations be changed. He thought a roof line wasn't quite correct on the rendering, and Joe can talk about that as well. But all in all, no major concerns were noted. The project will comply with the parking requirements. The maximum seating capacity is 150, and there's plenty of parking on site for that. The maximum employees at any one time, I believe, was eight, if I remember correctly. And they are adding a pergola, and I think notably, they're taking out some of the pavement in the front and adding some landscaping, so that will, number one, add a little bit of curb appeal and some greenery, but also better define the entrance and exit ways in and out of the property. So I would recommend approval of the waiver, but they are here this evening to present their proposal to the board and answer any questions you have.
Great. Do you have a presentation? Go ahead.
Just for the record, my name is Joe Cohen. I'm a landscape architect based here in Sturbridge. So I can walk you through the projects that Jean just described there. And then afterward, Jenna is going to describe the operation, maximum employees, that kind of thing, hours of operation. So the existing site as it sits now, the existing Friendly's building, the parking lot, Route 20, and currently, you know, there's no defined entrance there. It's just kind of open, but this is the kind of main aisle here and main aisle there. On the back of the property, currently, there's just some sidewalks that kind of go toward the parking lot. They're in pretty rough shape right now. And similarly, you know, as we just jumped in. The intent here is to reuse as much of the building and the site conditions as possible. So what we're trying to do here ... Jean, I can take this out.
You can. Yep.
Doing karaoke after?
Yes.
So as you can see, the existing photos of the building, it still very much looks like a Friendly's. The intent here is to kind of modernize the look of the building while still, you know, holding some of those, you know, traditional characteristics. So they've currently exposed the brick. It was painted over, so that's cleaned up nicely. Design Review is very happy with that. We're adding a front pergola here to kind of define that ice cream space for, you know, temporary users. On the west elevation, we had a Gito's sign that used to be up here on the roof line. Design Review had asked us to reconsider that, so we had moved it down here on the brick there, so it's a little less obtrusive. For the patio, we wanted to add a 1,400-square-foot patio there to kind of capitalize on that view outward over that green space there, and, you know, it makes a very nice outdoor seating area. As part of that ... Because the site already has significant impervious surface, we looked into, because we're adding 1,400 square feet of impervious there, going into the parking lot here and saw cutting out the pavement adjacent to the sidewalk on Route 20 to add some plantings and some green space there, that, you know, cleans up the street appearance there. It also helps define the circulation, and based on how the site grading is, there's no, you know, change to the stormwater flow that currently exists. So I think that's kind of a good project overview, so Jenna, do you want to just tell them about operation there?
Yep. So as Joe said, we're looking to open Gito's. It's going to be brick oven pizza, ice cream, and seafood. We're going to be open seven days a week. Our hours of operation are going to be from 11:00 a.m. to about 1:00 a.m. The total seating will be 150. There is 75 seats in the bar. The dining room will have 42 seats, and then seasonally, we'll have the patio, which will have 33 seats. In total, I believe we said we needed 100 ... no, 58 parking spaces, but we'll have, right now, we have 63 with the four handicapped. So I think that touched on the generals of it, of what we had.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Wally, do you have any questions or comments?
No, none. Thank you.
Jeff?
No.
No questions. Okay?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
On the layout plan, where you are removing some of the asphalt, I love that. It's a great idea. You're going to replace it with plantings. What kind of plantings? Are they going to be low to the ground so we don't have any sightline problems?
Yes. Kind of, to speak to that point, the site triangles, you know, are only affected this way because it is one way on that side. So the plantings there, we have some grasses, the Fothergilla and the summer suite there, so those will all be kept low, you know, for that reason.
Okay. That summer suite you pointed to in the middle there?
Correct.
Is that like a tallish grass that could be trimmed low?
It's actually a shrub. It's a woody shrub.
Okay.
We wanted something kind of hardy, but also stick to that native palette there.
Gotcha. I'm only thinking of this because we were just looking at that Panera development up the street, and a lot of people have commented that when you're trying to leave that place and you look left, there's a lot of vegetation in that area.
Yep.
The developer said, you know, the town asked for that, which I'm sure somebody did at some point. I just want to make sure that that stuff is going to be nice and low, and we'll be in good shape there.
Good.
In that area where you remove the asphalt, you're going to replace it with mulch or something, I assume, or is it going to be grass underneath it?
Yeah, it will be five-inch layer loam and then three-inch layer mulch.
Are you going to put a curb around that or with the water that's coming down the parking lot? Do you think any of that, all that mulch is going to end up in the sidewalk and in Route 20?
No, because currently ... Let's get the grading here, but it currently moves kind of around that. So the grading here pushes toward the building, gets caught by this curb, and goes to this catch basin here. And then the only area that would be affected by that drainage is like just this piece here, so it's not very much flow at all.
Gotcha. Actually, in that area, I saw that you guys are going to be restriping the parking lot, I assume, in the exact same layout because you have the parking spaces that you need. I'm not 100% sure if those accessible parking spaces meet current code, and I'm not super sure the implication of repainting them exactly as they exist, but something you may want to keep in mind as you look at that, that looks like kind of a steepish cross-pitch area, and I'm not sure where a ramp is. I know that there's a curb along there.
So there's a ramp right here.
Right.
There's also a small ramp right there.
I don't know, maybe as you develop a line stripe program or whatever, you might want to move your ADA spaces closer to where that ramp is further uphill. I don't know if the slopes are like that, up that way, but there's a few parking spaces up there. And is that where the trash is? I'm actually pointing further up across that drive aisle.
Over toward this hill?
Yeah, there you go.
I think exist, when Friendly's was operating, the trash was in this space.
Yep.
We will be moving the trash to the complete back.
To this far ...
Correct.
Space as far away as possible.
Okay. Is that going to be in like an enclosure with like a fence or screening or anything like that?
It's already fenced over there.
There's already a fence over there?
Yeah, the fence is three-sided here, so.
Okay. Is that legit?
It can't be visible from the streets, so you'll have to screen the front of it.
Okay.
Okay. And then I was zooming in with my aging eyeballs, trying to find light poles along the property lines here. Is there adequate lighting, especially in that back area there?
There is.
I know you guys aren't like proposing any modifications to the existing or ...
But there is a light post all the way in the back where like the dumpsters will be. There is a light back there.
Okay.
And there are some along the sides as well.
Great.
The other one's right here.
Yep. I saw a couple along that way.
I think there's one over here.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was curious about.
Two over here.
Very dark. It's, the lot's been vacant for so long. I love that you guys are getting in there and redeveloping it, but I couldn't quite remember what it was like back there.
No problem.
When you remove the landscaping in the middle there, are you, you're going to have like two well-defined curb cuts along Route 20? Is the intent to have both of those bidirectional in and out at both curb cut, or are you going to create like a one-way flow?
No, it would stay the same because the travel aisles, you know, we're not going to narrow those in any way.
Do you know about how wide those are-ish?
It's 23 feet.
Would it be possible to paint some stop bars to encourage people to stop before the sidewalk? Because I'm just assuming your striping plan right now is just going to mimic exactly what's out there. It's just redo that.
Yeah, I think that was, yes.
So I'm just saying, maybe on the right-hand side of those two lanes for people that are exiting the site, paint a stop bar across that.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's an opportunity to put stop signs there as well.
Yeah, it's just a stop bar. We can certainly do that. If we have to incorporate signs, that might get tricky, but we can look into it.
Would you guys think about doing permeable pavers for the patios? I know those are kind of not awesome in parking lots because you have a lot of sanding implications up in the Northeast, but on a pedestrian use for the patio, that might save you a lot of impervious.
The problem with using impervious, it's not a very large area, and what you do when you construct that is you have to dig a big gravel sump to collect that stormwater with the initial flow. So if we were to do that, I mean, you're talking like a five-foot excavation down that much, so it's just a much larger project if we were to go with the impervious.
Gotcha. And you do have a net impervious reduction with the other changes that you're making?
Correct. So we're, I think we're net 200.
Nice.
So these, these spaces that we're cutting out were bigger than the patio we're putting in.
All right. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Sue?
Yes, we'll go back to the planter area in the front of the near 20. So that's not going to be in a raised planter of any type. It's going to be raised by loom and mulch from the parking lot.
Correct. For that same reason is, once we start elevating, we start to disrupt site triangles, you know, particularly for people exiting out here. We don't want to obstruct that view at all, but at ground level, you know, we can add a slight mound to it, just, you know, maybe six, eight inches, something like that.
No, I was just thinking, how are you going to keep people off of it?
Is ...
That's a question.
As far as like walking through?
And they pull in and pull out, yes. You know?
I mean, it's pretty heavily planted, so I would assume.
You think that'll be sufficient?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, good. Right. Had a lot of my questions answered.
Sorry, Sue, I tend to do that.
You did a good job.
We really don't care.
You really did a good job.
Bowl of thunder.
Oh, no. No, no, no. It works for me. The lighting is important in the back of the building. The lighting that you're planning for the patio is beautiful, and I, on the, on the far left there, is that a light pole near the sidewalk? Yes.
Yeah, right there, yep.
So in relation to the, that would be blocked by the building, by the cooler, correct?
Correct, yes.
So that won't provide any light to the parking lot?
No. This picture's kind of in the way, but this cooler, you know, is, is over here, and this, you know, won't, certainly won't make it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to add lighting to that back area, that back corner. The other thing is deliveries and snow removal, when you have to take care of snow, is there a designed area?
There is. We have kind of spaces along here, spaces over here that will handle the snow removal. Ted, you want to discuss deliveries real quick here?
Discuss what?
Deliveries.
Deliveries. I mean, the deliveries have just come right.
Yeah, so the deliveries will be coming in, in the backside over here, where there's a back door that goes into the kitchen, and the cooler's right there. So that's where all the deliveries are going to be coming in.
Is that more or less the way it is now? It was with Friendly's?
Uh-uh.
I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
Was that where it was with Friendly's or ...
Yeah, that's where it was with Friendly's. Yep. That's how they went in.
A waiver of site plan.
Yep. They all went in the same exact way. They went in there, and then the deliveries all went in that back door.
Got it.
Okay. So there'll be enough room for turning around for those trucks to get in and out of there?
Correct. And they're the drop, so they come usually before anyone's there.
Yeah, we try to get all the deliveries before we open.
So that's all that's ...
Yep.
That's how we have it set up, so that way there's no issues.
Good. Okay. I had mentioned the fact that the Old Sturbridge Village Motor Lodge that is right, right near your property.
Yep.
And the concern for noise and light and all that thing. The lighting, I understand, is, is all set, and I understand that if there's an entertainment license, that would have to be taken up with the Board of Select for noise.
Okay.
Just, just to put it out there so you know that that's part of this.
Okay, no problem.
Okay?
Can you hear that?
Because I know there'd be a stage there, and they may not ever occupy the motel as such again, but if they do, I want you to be aware of what you can ...
Okay. I'm just going to repeat it to Ted. He's been hard of hearing lately, just so he knows what to say.
No, I said that.
She's saying that if we do want to do like, that there's a proposed stage for Wendy, we would need an entertainment license, and that Old Sturbridge Hotel would have to ... She's just letting us know.
Great. Okay. Anything else, Sue?
All set.
Okay, thanks. Chris?
Mike? No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Could we have a motion then to endorse the A and R?
移到
No. Waves.
No. I'm sorry, what?
You said endorse A and R.
No, right.
Oh, that's right. Waiver of site plan.
And let me have a question. Can I have a question, please? Joe?
Sure. No, you had plenty of chance, and I asked you. Go ahead.
I know you did.
By all means, go ahead.
I know you did.
No, go ahead, really.
Pedestrian traffic in the parking lot, is there going to be pathways for pedestrians within the parking lot?
So the ...
It's a big parking lot and some different, just questioning that.
Yeah, the site circulation in the parking lot, there's no modifications there. It's going to stay as pavement. Off of the back patio here, we do have emergency access through that existing walkway there that will be redone, just to be brought up to code.
Okay. Thank you. All set.
Very good.
I'm all set.
Very good. Okay, so correction, we need a motion to waive the site plan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'm not voting. I had a question.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Not really a question, but a comment, so I'm adding the two additional conditions of the dumpster shall be screened and to install stop bars at the curb cuts in addition to the additional.
Good. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, that was Wally and who?
Me.
Thank you.
Yep. Great.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, next we have a waiver of site plan for 413 Main Street.
Julia is here, and she will be much easier.
Hello.
Hi. Welcome.
All right. So this is Julia Nadler, and she is taking over the former Jimmy D's location, and I say she'll be much simpler because she's not making any changes to the exterior of the building or the parking lot or anything. She will be occupying the space. There'll be 26 seats inside of the building in the outdoor seating in the summertime or spring, summer, and fall. And she also will run her catering business from this location. She's already been granted a variance by the Board of Health to install an under-the-counter grease trap based on her current menu, and she is aware of the requirement to provide her complete kitchen layout with the equipment to the Board of Health for approval before she starts her renovations. And she is here to explain her operation, the types of food that she serves, and what her hours will be and the services she'll offer. But I, we did send this out to staff, and no major concerns were noted, and I would recommend approval of this waiver as well.
Very good. Thank you. Like to talk about your project.
Sure. So moving into this space at Johnny D's, our intention is actually not to even change anything that was pre-existing as far as the layout inside of the building as well. Kitchen will be upstairs. Downstairs will be cold storage. Right now, we are adding a wall to cover exposed plumbing in the basement so that we can have a dish washing area in the basement as well. We are actually going to be doing kind of a cool thing. We're going to be doing a lot of farm-to-table. We've been doing a big outreach to a lot of the local farms in the area in Brookfield, Paxton, Munson. We're trying to keep it as close as we can. We're also going to be very, we're also very happy to be doing a lot of cheeses, so it will be the area's first cheese shop, first like gourmet-style foods, things of that nature. A lot of the deliveries that we'll have will either be through UPS, everything that we'll be getting cheese-wise from New York is shipped overnight, so that'll be like UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, smaller box trucks, things of that nature. The same goes for our food deliveries as well. We are not aggressively pursuing our liquor license quite yet, so I'm not assuming that we're going to have a huge influx in the beginning. In fact, we are trying to focus mostly on the retail aspect once we get open, and then gradually anticipate larger crowds to come in. Well, I say large, but 26 people at a time to come in for lunch and dinner and so on. Our catering company, we own two vintage Airstreams, which will be parked on the property, and I have permission from our landlords to do so. And yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Wally, do you have any questions?
A question.
A question. Vintage Airstreams, I love that idea.
Oh, thank you.
Will you be serving out of those while they're there, or just being...are they just being parked there waiting to go to catering jobs?
They will just be parked there. I would...I'd love in...in the eventuality that we do get our liquor license, if we are able to get some sort of special permit to do something outdoors with one of the Airstreams, I would love to do that. But right now, we have to get the nuts and bolts going, and that's the first step, so...
So, I'm also...I'm unfamiliar...well, I'm totally unfamiliar with the tasting, tasting portion of it. So, is this...would it be considered a full-service restaurant, or just a...or a tasting room? What is...what makes you...you are establishing...what does it make you different than place down the road or something like that?
Sure, absolutely. So, right now, we're going to be focusing on doing grab-and-go. That's what our...I don't want to say our varies, but what that's...what's...we have discussed with the Board of Health as far as the variance is concerned for grease trap. So, eventually, I would like to get it to a point where it is dine-in for dinner.
Okay.
But for right now, we're going to be keeping with Johnny D's, where we'll be serving sandwiches that can be eaten on-site. We'll be doing cheese boards that can be eaten on-site or taken to-go, soups, pasta salads, things like that. That is really...I hate our Stop and Shop. I'm just going to say that right now. I'm a huge foodie, and for me, seeing their potato salad, it makes me really sad. It makes me want to cry. So, offering good food like that to the town is really just what I want to do. Something that you can come in and you can grab, you know, beef bourguignon and take it home with you and have it for tomorrow night. You know, having meals that are prepared, ready to go for either your freezer or for you to enjoy that night, and just make something special from the local ingredients. That's really...
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I'm a little nervous in this situation.
Oh, no, that's fine. You're doing... Very informative. Good, very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Jane?
No.
Okay, Sue? That's it. Chris?
No questions, no.
Very good.
I'm very excited.
That was great. Could we have a motion to waive site plan approval?
Submove.
Second. Second. Wally, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no one? Very good. Good luck with it. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Chris, was that his motion?
I'm sorry, Jane and then Wally.
My gosh. I'm glad I don't take minutes all the time.
You can watch the tape.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If Janay's watching. I miss you.
Okay.
I'm sure she's not watching.
Nothing else in your report or your update? You're all set with that?
No, all set.
Okay, great. Any older new business? Wally?
No, none.
Yep.
Nothing.
Jane?
All set.
Sue?
All set.
All set. Everyone's all set.
I have one quick question. The ice cream shop that was supposed to go at the jog camp, what happened to that?
Yeah. She's been unable to get a contractor.
Oh, okay.
Really?
Yeah. First, materials, equipment, and contractor have been her biggest issues. I think she's finally, maybe has somebody on board. I had Janay reach out to her about a month ago, maybe, to see where she was. Could we do anything to help her? And she said it's really just supply chain.
Well, that's too bad.
That was tough timing.
Yeah, it's too bad.
All right. Motion to adjourn then.
Submove.
Jane?
Second.
Wally? All in favor? Very good. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.
Thank you.